To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
What's your call? Are you loose, Nathan?
What?
Are you loose? You're down neck. I didn't know if they were gonna have contact today or...
Feeling good.
Alright. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Others saying same. Motion carrying.
Prove the minutes for nine seventeen.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Others saying same. General public concerns? Being none? Travis? That Travis?
Yep.
You're welcome to come on up.
Alright.
We had originally said that we would have Travis here on the twenty-fourth to talk to him about the locks. And we've had several discussions in between times, so we need to get him up to speed and rap.
Um, let's go first. I know we don't need to put fobs on every door in the courthouse.
Right.
So I think we need to come up with a plan where we do start with the main doors, cause it's... And have an overall plan to add later on. Is that a possibility?
So like the outer doors? Like the entry doors?
Yes.
Not any inside to be on?
Not to start with, probably. Or, well... We can have the main... Like Rick said, maybe you can look at that, but I'd... Department doors, maybe?
Each department door, maybe?
Maybe. Come up with a plan for us too. Cause, you know, we don't know how the wiring has to all go and...
The more we do it one time, the better it is. Cause you know, you pull one, pull two, pull, you know, more to pull at one time, the easier it is. Or at least a plan to know what doors are you planning on doing it for future wise?
Right.
So we know how big of a hole to drill through the wall, you know, how many cables we're gonna get through?
I think that's...
Wouldn't be nice to know.
We need to do a walkthrough with you.
Okay.
In each department. And decide which doors need to be done.
Right.
And then you can come up with a plan and maybe try to break it down, so we can maybe do it in two stages or something. Maybe three.
Or well... Yeah, we can do that. Uh, when would you wanna walk through and do that, I guess?
Well, I'm around most of the time, except for today.
Okay.
So Travis, on me, if we have a... If you did the front door, I'm just curious, and then we did Peggy's office over here, would... We'd always have the capability of having that fob open, though?
Mm-hmm. We did, it depends how we program it.
Right.
Each person can have certain rights, rules for each door, between certain times to come in or out of that door. And then it would also track who comes in, you know, who fobs in, who fobs out.
But the most... Time consuming and the most money is pull the wires from A to wherever.
If you know you're gonna do eight, ten doors on that side of the building on first floor. At least know for future that you're gonna do that.
Right.
Then I can put a big enough, cause there's not very much false ceiling. Most of my wires would go through false ceiling if it had it, but we don't in this real, cause it's such an old building. So we're gonna have to put in like a duct, kinda like that wire mold on the, where the electric there is. You know, and we want a big enough duct to cover anything that we're planning on doing down that side, you know?
Yeah, to change things later.
I mean, even if you plan, I mean, some thought too, is if you're planning on putting cameras down there in the future too. You know, you wanna plan for anything in the future you're gonna do.
I think probably what we need to do is sit and sit down and have a serious conversation about the future.
Mm-hmm.
What possibilities, cause I'm sure cameras are something that we might be adding. Cause we've talked about that, we already have a couple.
Yep.
Might be adding more.
And I'm not sure where we're at, if we need to, you know, can we expand on our current system, or do we need to add?
We would have to add a new system, basically, cause that one's more geared towards originally recording this. That's how we set it up. And it's priority four years, two, four years old.
It's already obsolete, isn't it?
Oh, of course.
Soon as you lock out the door, what you put in is obsolete.
Yep.
Oh, I guess that's... What would your timeframe be, uh, if Rick, and I'm blaming on Rick, because Rick has had some construction background? Most mornings, or you...
I'm pretty open all week. I'm kinda working on the new city hall and I'll go into this week, so just give me a heads up and...
Okay.
And, you know, I live in, right outside of Austin, so if you...
Okay, hold on, get your cell number from me and then I'll give you a call, cause...
Yeah.
I know today's not good for me, and then one day this week, I know I'm gonna be gone, but I don't know which day it is yet.
Okay.
I can get the cell phone.
Okay, perfect.
So I don't have to glare it over the camera.
Yeah. Everyone call.
He likes to have his...
Cell number, yeah. But I, I think that's what we need to do. We need to come up with like a, a plan for the future.
Right, right.
So that we're not...
Which I understand the outer doors would be probably a good idea, and then department doors, you know?
Yeah.
So if we did that, like that, and you had, uh, let's say you said the inner doors would be, um, and, and I don't have a clue, and say a hundred dollars. How long would, you know, it took us two to three years to get those inner doors? I mean, would the price?
Probably, probably setting up the original, getting the outer doors and the wire channels, that's gonna be the biggest...
That's gonna be the biggest...
Biggest expense, because you're putting in the, the, the holes and the channels for everything.
Right.
And then later on, it'd be cheaper.
Then you just have to add the rest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For door wise, it'd be cheaper later on.
By then Rick will know how to do it, he'll help you.
Exactly.
Yeah. He'll be right after that. Well, can you get, like, Rick said from the get-go, which is a good idea, the plan of it?
Yeah.
And then present that to us, and you know what we wanna start? And we wanna... Yeah, I think the plan is, so you know down the road, you're gonna keep expanding.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, we can do that.
Well, I'll...
Give me a call and we'll meet up.
I'll get your number and we'll make, make connections this week and...
Well, getting out of rush hour traffic in Austin, oh, that'll be the...
Be tough. Hey, my shingling guy was looking, want insurance company, looking for the building code inspector in Austin.
Did he find you?
I, I couldn't find him. And I tried telling him that, but...
Bring him up to the elevator and have him spell, spell location.
Perfect.
Alright, well, we appreciate it.
Alright.
Thanks Travis.
Thank you.
Got you.
Thank you Travis.
Alright. Next, I see Mary is here, we can go early. Mary, you wanna come up? Mary Hanson on where we're at?
I think first we need to give you the option, if you wanna do this in closed session?
No.
You don't, you want, you want it open, okay, cause we need to present that to you. Alright.
So, I guess, first of all, I don't, I, I'm kinda in left field most of the time. Well, I was out in Cincinnati when a lot of this took place, so I kinda got the phone call on the way back and, and was... Inter, acting with the phone, so I'm, I'm curious to know, where are we at, what do we, how?
Well, I had asked to, well, I guess first of all, I'd like to have Dave Lee removed from this, since he has a conflict of interest of any kind of vote on this. And second, I had sent out a letter that, um, I wanted to be removed off the agenda for this, that I did not officially resign. Put in a resignation to any of you guys. So, yeah, I'm curious as to why I'm here.
I got a call from Mary this morning saying the same thing, as I reported on the agenda this morning. She had said that she never submitted a full resignation. I, I couldn't tell if she was upset, she didn't sound like she was happy, but I told her, I was just reporting what the agenda told me, so, uh, as well.
I was in Iowa City when all this happened, you were in Cincinnati. I'd like to know what you did wrong, why the big controversy, I've never heard it from start to finish.
I, uh, as far as my contract with the county for animal control and contracted to pick up dogs and cats. Take them to the vet if necessary, or take them to the shelter, which I have done, always done, and never had a problem with that. So, as far as my animal control, I've always done what I'm supposed to do.
Okay.
Well, um, I suggest we put this on the agenda last week, cause Dave showed me the text message you sent him, saying that, uh, you're resigning. Your ACO position, as well as running the pound, and I will give you a press release on...
This stemmed from...
So that's, that's why I put it on the agenda.
This stemmed from a dog.
And then later on, but again, we got that email from you saying you wanted to be off. And I thought, well, we can't have this on off, on off, so let's get it on the agenda, let's find out and get it straight up.
This stemmed from something that happened at the shelter, not as far as the animal control. Um, a dog that was delivered to the shelter, and that was a conflict of interest where you signed the adoption form, adopting out a dog. That was there, that, um, technically you can't do, because I have no contract with you guys for the shelter. In fact, November eleventh of twenty seventeen, and it's on record that you put me in charge of the shelter. My name is on the license of the shelter. So, yeah, when you signed an adoption form, adopting out a dog, that I had denied the application. And you signed it, the application was from the thirtieth of September, or of August, you signed it the fourteenth of September.
That was the day I signed it.
Right. But the application was denied on the thirtieth of August. So, that's what this is all about, not, and, and that was our discussion, and that was an ongoing discussion with, we had a, um, group chat, I guess, with Dave Lee, Dean, um, Jennifer Vought. And that was, I mean, Dave Lee himself called me and said, she's threatening to sue you, and if you don't basically back down, she's gonna sue and we're, the board of supervisors will not back you. Um, his wife at two o'clock in the morning, this morning, sent me a text message wanting to know what areas I served. It's just constant pressure with him and his family and their friends, and that's what set me off to be not, usually, I mean, and I've almost done this two years now. I've taken in and rehomed five hundred and forty-three animals.
I know you do a good job at that.
And that was, this was, I didn't, you know, you overrode me, or whatever your point was, to sign an adoption form with what I did not agree with. And that was what set all this off, not, I just decided I was not gonna do it, so...
I was, what I did was, I got a phone call from, first the dep, or from Dean, then I got a phone call from the county attorney, and said that someone needed to sign this dog off. I was, I'm sitting in this chair, so I got the ability to sign the paper. On the way home from Cincinnati, I stopped up, signed the paper, and that's what happened.
Right, but no one, but no one had even made a phone call. I didn't get a call from any of the board supervisors, other than Dave Lee threatening me. None of you had talked to me about this dog, or, or this situation.
Dean talked to you about it, and I talked to you about it.
And I said I wasn't gonna sign off on the dog.
But, you know, your agreement with the board was not to take title to dogs in the name of the Humboldt County Animal Control Officer. And that's what, that's what happened here.
I'm a, I'm a self-contracted, I'm self-contracted. So as a self-contracted employee, you don't have the right to say how I do it, just the end result.
Well, I mean, nothing in the agreement with the board contemplates the Humboldt County Animal Control Officer taking ownership of dogs, which is what happened here.
Who's supposed to take ownership of them, then? Because you put me in charge of the pound, I'm the animal control officer, who's supposed to take charge of them, then? The, the way that the state says that whoever's name is on the pound, which is mine, to run that is the one that signs the adoption form, because...
But your name's not on the pound that's the animal control officer, it's just that Mary Hanson.
So then, it should, I was thrown into all this of take care of these animals, which I do, for, on my own time, on my own dime. I have twenty-two cats setting up there now in one pit hole. Ten of them need medication every single day. That means six o'clock in the morning, I'm out there doing it before I go to whoop my full-time job. I am committed to do it, and what set me off is when I'm threatened, when, when you sign a thing that you didn't know nothing really about, because nobody called and asked me. That's, that's where I was. I've been doing this for almost two years and doing a good job.
Can I make a statement here? You keep referring to me as threatening you.
I took it as a threat, yes.
Let me talk. What I told you, back in August, if you have the stolen dog in that prior pen, and I was under the understanding at that time, the dog was stolen out of Webster County. It should never have been brought into Humboldt County, and you told me it was in your name, and I says, if it's in your name, the county's not involved in it. We're not gonna back you if this thing ends up in court over a stolen dog.
But you did get involved.
That's what I told you. Now, that ain't threatening you, that's just telling a statement that I will not, and the supervisors will not, and Humboldt County will not back you.
But you got, but they signed their name, you did get involved, because they signed their name to the dog. So how are you not getting involved?
My name's not on no dog. That's all I've been involved.
You signed your name on a document, adopting out a dog. And the dog was stolen, not by me, and it wasn't brought to me as an animal. I didn't go get the dog as an animal control officer, Jennifer Kirkoff delivered that dog when I wasn't even there to the pound, so...
But that's, I didn't threaten you.
I took it as a threat.
I just told you that we was not gonna back you if this thing went in court, if that dog is put in your name. So all the problems come about, from a dog come from out of county to, to our...
That was delivered by somebody else to the pound when I wasn't even there. And I tried to make the best of it, I tried to keep Dean out of it, I, um, the owner was contacted, and he surrendered it, in the end, he surrendered the dog to me. So, there was no legal, I mean, they couldn't sue, they couldn't get anybody in trouble, it was surrendered then, like it should be, like a lot of the owner surrender dogs. We have them sign a form, surrendering it, so they're, that is basically my problem, which it was, until you made it your problem.
So we have two different situations, we have an animal control, or a control officer, and we have a pound situation.
Right. As the animal control officer, I have always done what I've been asked to do, and I feel above and beyond. I've helped the DNR get a deer out of somebody's house. I've been called on, uh, search warrants to get dogs. I've been called at four o'clock in the morning to get a dog out of the motel that checked itself in. I've been, uh, this recent murder case, I was called down there to get a dog out of the, there.
We went and collected a beaver off the trail.
Yeah, a beaver off the trail. I've just constantly done, even what my contract doesn't say, when they call me, I go and do it. As, as far as the pound, I run it to the best of my ability. I mean, like I said, I do that for free, on my own dime. So, I do combine the two things, and everybody calls me as, you know, I, you didn't want no part of the pound, you put my, my name is on the licensing as that as responsible party.
But Mary, you made the pound Humboldt County's problem when you started doing things as the Humboldt County Animal Control Officer.
Because I'm both.
Yeah, but that's what happened here. So that dog that came up here from Fort Dodge was chipped, right?
Yes.
And it was at the pound for two months?
It was at the pound for two months. It was left, it was only supposed to be there a couple days, and it was left there for two months.
And the owner didn't sign it over for two months.
I also posted it like I am supposed to.
Right.
To have, you, when you get a stray, when you get a dog in, you post it online, like I'm supposed to, and then they have their chance to come and claim their dog. I did that, I posted it. Jennifer Vought also told me she had called the owner, because she got the chip number and the name of the owner from J.C. At Almost Home, where the dog originally came from. She told me she called, the number was disconnected. As far as I'm concerned, we tried to contact the owner, I posted it like I was supposed to, so I, I did what I was supposed to do.
But Mary, because, because you took ownership of the dog as the Humboldt County Animal Control Officer, that then involved the board with what happened with the lawyer. So that's how the board got involved. And that's, so the board was threatened with a lawsuit, and they have the power to settle lawsuits, and then you did not wanna go along with the settlement. And you came here today saying nobody's talked to you, I think you know exactly what was going on, you just didn't wanna do it. So that puts us in a, in an odd spot, because the Humboldt County Animal Control Officer shouldn't own dogs that are stray, that's not, that was not contemplated in your agreement with the board. So, that's why, why we're here, and that's what, yeah, that's the end result of all of this, is you...
So who is supposed to own the dog?
Well, it'd be better if you're running the shelter, that you do it in your name, not as an animal control officer, because now the dog is, the dog is now your property of Humboldt County. So, that, unfortunately for everyone, ends up with the board supervisors making a decision on the dog, which none of the board wanted to make. So that's, that's why, that's why we're here, and in the middle of this, you typed to Dave, and you typed to Dean, and you told him to quit, so...
And Dean also told Dave that we had worked that out, and I was, and I have been carrying on at animal control this month, so Dave knew that.
He told me that you agreed to go, continue on, you wouldn't take any more animals in, and that you would run the pound...
I wouldn't take any more animals.
Until he got rid of all of them that was out there, and then you was done. That was my conversation with Dean.
Well, obviously Dean isn't here to, you know, say anything.
I talked to Dean one day last week about this situation, trying to learn what was going on, and I went to talk to John too. And Kirk told me that he thought you guys had buried a hatchet, he'd like to have you stay around, that's what he told me.
And that's what we, that's what we told, that's what I...
He said that nobody else can do the job, so we wanna keep her. Remember, mistakes made, we gotta correct the mistakes and move on. That's what Dean told me.
But Mary, you also told me that you weren't gonna sign the dog over if somebody else could, and then the dog got signed over, and then two days later, you took the dog back. Again, as the Humboldt County Animal Control Officer, and now it's, it's stolen, so...
The dog was stolen out of the pound at four o'clock in the morning.
But it came back, they liked that.
Right, and it came back, and then it...
But separately, Mary, when Bruce signed the paperwork on Friday, September fourteenth, you then took it back on September sixteenth, and if you run the chip, the chip said the dog is now stolen again, so...
Because twenty-four pet watch, it, I don't know, he, he might have a little bit of knowledge of how things are run, because you have a facility with animals, you deal with the animals, you know how you have to deal with the state on licensing and forms you have to fill out. The forms I have to fill out of intake, outtake, rabies shots, it isn't just I take these guys in and pet them and get them out the door. They have to have all the paperwork of intake, outtake, adoption form, rabies shots, everything has to be in order. It doesn't just go, you can just decide to give the dog to whoever. The girl that you adopted the dog out doesn't even have a home, she doesn't...
But Mary, you already gave the dog to her.
No, I did not. No, I, I gave her on, when I do, when I do, when I do...
How did you get the dog if nobody gave it to you?
When I do applications, I do temporary applications all the time, to say, see if the dog gets along with your dog, see if the dog gets along with your cat, see if the dog does this, if they don't, they're returned, if they do.
But you gave the dog to...
On a temporary thing, where she said she was taking it to her brother.
But you, you gave the dog to him, that's how she...
On a temporary thing, and then I denied it, because she didn't take it, where she was saying she was taking it.
But then, then you told me that you weren't gonna sign anything, if somebody else signed it, that was fine, and then two days after...
I did not say it was fine, I said I will not do it, and you said then Dean will. And I said if Dean signs it, that's up to him. I never said it was fine, I never agreed to it.
But, I mean, it, it's a little disingenuous when you tell me that, and then two days after, you sign.
Well, it's a little disheartening that you guys hire me to do a job, throw me into all of this, and then...
No one's saying...
What I'm doing wrong, and I'm, what I'm doing, I'm just trying to do it.
Mary, no one's saying your job's not difficult, or that you're not doing a good job, but with this one, you know, I was not aware that, until this happened, that the Humboldt County Animal Control Officer is taking ownership of dogs. That was not, that's not anything that was contemplated in your agreement with the board, would you agree with that?
It's been on there forever, no one's ever questioned it.
I don't think anybody's had a reason to question it. I mean, is this...
Then...
Yeah, I didn't know it that way. Who would take ownership of the dog if you picked him up? If you didn't, if you didn't take ownership, who would you get rid of? Almost whole, almost homeless full.
Almost everybody's full, everybody's full. And that's why it comes back to us, and that's why we needed the shelter to begin with, because everybody's full, and no one, that's why this all started, because no one would take our animals. So, I mean...
If there's been a mistake made, the only way to correct this mistake and move on, that's what I wonder. We all make mistakes, I hate to see somebody sacrificed because of mistake. We gotta have the program somehow or other, mistakes made, just correct the mistakes, and if we have to write somebody up, let's write them up, let's don't get rid of somebody.
I have two suggestions, if you wanna talk about correcting a mistake. One, that going forward, Humboldt County Animal Control Officer not take ownership of any dog. That would be really easy to do. Even if you still run the pound or the shelter, you just take it in your name or the shelter's name, not the county's name.
Yeah.
Cause that, the county doesn't need to be involved in adopting dogs. And that's, that's where we are right now, which is not what anybody contemplated. That would be suggestion number one. Suggestion number two would be, the dog gets signed over to the lady. That's suggestion number two.
So you're at, you're saying that if, if they get signed over to me personally, then I don't have a contract to run that shelter, so then I'm liable for all of the animals, all of you guys' animals, the county and the city's animals. Then you're making me liable for everybody's animals, if I have to personally take responsibility for them.
Well, I don't mean to speak for the board, and I don't, I don't think the intention was for the county to be adopting the animals. I just, I just don't, I don't...
No, and I, and I know that, that's why...
I, I think a lot of the motions run, run with adopting and cruelty and everything. No one person, I feel, should be accountable for a dog or a cat that comes in, I'm sorry, Mary, I don't think you should be the only sole person in control of having to adopt a dog. That's, when you put up a facility, there should be protocol. We haven't had the time to make that protocol, and we need to do that. We need to sit down and make the protocol, so she's not liable, and she's not on the hook for every single cat and dog that comes into this place. Because I'm telling ya, certain animals are never able to be housed at some point in time, and, and no one person should have to make that call. No one person. You know, there should be a few people, may, a vet, um, somebody that knows animals, and, and there should be some protocols. We don't have that yet, because we're not set up yet. So what happened here should have never happened, because she, she shouldn't be putting her name on these dogs, I don't care, or the cats. I mean, when I take in an animal, when somebody brings me, they have to sign off, give it to me, and then, then it is mine, it's on my property. I am responsible for anybody that comes after me, or if the dog or the cat or whatever bites somebody, heaven forbid, I'm responsible, cause I, I adopted it. And she shouldn't have to adopt every single animal that comes in, and I feel we need to change that, and we need the time to change that, and we're starting to. But this is a mess that needs to be looked at as, let's be educated by it, make sure it doesn't happen again. Um, because there's no way that one person can handle all this. She needs some protocol, and a vet needs to be behind her as well, and, and another person, that we, we do not need any one person to have to adopt all these and be responsible for all these.
I would agree, and I would, but on our side, on my home phone, when I came home and there's a message from an attorney that please call this number, because there's been contacted by so-and-so to possibly take action against the county, it's like, it's like I walked into a movie with ten minutes left, and I keep bothering my wife, I don't know what's going on, and she's mad, cause I'm interrupting. I had no clue, so then I make, start making phone calls, and I know Dave and, and Rick are...
And I don't think, and I don't think anybody got the full story.
I'm still not sure how it all went on.
Yeah. And, and I didn't, and I didn't get the full story, I only got a couple. But I do know that Mary does a good job.
We all would agree.
And I think she needs to stay on it, because she, she can move more animals and buy more homes than any of us, believe me, cause I've tried, I've got four cats that need a home if anybody needs one. So, and, and we've hanged them, and, but they're mine now, so I may have to stay the neuter and send them out, and I, you know, I don't think, but, you know, that's what I chose to do, because I took that on. But, I, we need to, with this shelter, we need to get some bylaws down, we need to get protocols, and this will save all of this, and all of you.
Would it also do good to better differentiate the two? I think that's one of the issues at play here.
Yeah.
Is that the ACO is being too much blended with a shelter, and the two are different.
Yeah, there's no, right now, there's no difference.
Correct, it's the same.
And that wasn't the, if that wasn't the intention, and that's how we got here, separately, if, if we had more, more separate roles... if, if we had more, more separate roles, then, you know, all of that question of who adopts the dog would have been dealt with just with Mary and if you have a board, whatever you're boarded, but not, not the board of supervisors. That, that's where we run into the problem, that's why when the dog is actually the Animal Control Officer and owned by the Animal Control Officer, then the board gets involved and that's what happened here, so I think if we can work to define the roles and then get rid of the dog, I think those would be really good steps to solve.
The dog should probably go back, I'm really, the dog should go back to Fort Dodge, regardless, because that's originally...
Almost Home, Almost Home won't take it back. I called...
It's got aggression history.
Well, okay.
Right now, the dog, it's on the training. So...
Right now, the dog that Jennifer vows house.
Okay, let, let's say this, if she's willing, Jennifer's willing to take, and this is how I feel, and this is what I tell, I've had two very aggressive dogs come into my facility.
Not mine.
No.
You like mine.
I like.
I'm teasing you.
One of them was a trigger dog, he never knew when he was gonna go off, but he did. And I, when his owners came to me on the Sunday to pick him up, I go, um, can I talk to you privately? And what I said is, "I'll keep this dog for free overnight if you make a call to your vet tomorrow and have him put it down." Do you know how hard that is? Because this dog tries to attack somebody for no reason, and thank goodness I had a lead on him, because he would've, and he would've done some volatious damage. Most of the time, I never had a problem with the dog, I had this dog in here for two years, was just fine, acted fine, was just a wonderful dog, you would've never thought. Then as I sit there and tell the guy the story, he breaks down and cries to me and said, "Well, the dog attacked my wife about a week ago, ripped her arm up, no reason, just out of the blue." And that's why he brought it to me, is because his grandkids were coming for the weekend and he didn't want the dog to bite his grandkids, but he wasn't willing to tell me that in the beginning. And we destroyed the dog, and he called the vet, and I found him another dog, and they couldn't believe how wonderful and what a dog is supposed to be, you know? It's hard to make those calls, it really is, because these people, they cried over it. I'm sorry about my phone. But, um, I, I just, certain animals, and let's sign this off to her, if she wants to, and this is what I say, do you, if your dog bites, do you want the responsibility, the legal responsibility for somebody to take everything you own? Because that's what it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if Jennifer wants to take that responsibility, give it to her, because you guys all know what the dog could do.
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Give her that.
And usually...
If they want, now, take the emotions out of it, Mary.
No, I say usually we do a transfer to transfer, if there's dogs that have issues like that, instead of doing an adoption form, because when you sign that, and I talked to a lawyer for two hours last Friday, she also runs a rescue, we do a transfer, like I, I had a hound that I got from Boulder, Gilmore City, that was surrendered, couldn't get it adopted out, how many people coon hunt, you know? So I shipped it to AIM Shelter, we did a transfer, that, we're done with it. When that shelter took it, we're done with it, if that dog bites somebody, it goes on them, because if they adopt it out, it's now them. When you do an adoption form, no matter what, if that dog bites somebody, they're gonna sue the owner, they're gonna sue the shelter where it came from, from not saying this dog has a bite history, this dog has whatever, we do a transfer, we never do an adoption form with a dog that has a bite history. So, that's what I said, I had a shelter that was willing to take him, I was gonna do a transfer to transfer, and we're done. I would not do an adoption form on that dog.
Can we do that?
Let me, so, I'm purely talking out loud.
Well, you have half interest in this, meaning you're in the city, so...
Right, so, I keep going back to, the gray area is because we can't separate the two roles, Animal Control versus running a shelter.
Yeah, I mean, our, our position with Mary, she's an Animal Control Officer, when we have a dog complaint, we call you, you take the dog.
And one of the areas that lies being gray is both animals are being housed at the same location that the county is currently paying. So what if, 501, you have a 501(c)(3), correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so what if, this is purely hypothetical, run it by, run it by John first and he'll come back with a response later, I'm sure, what if, instead of the county paying for the rent, the county gives the 501(c)(3) a donation every month, 501(c)(3) serves as the owner, the 501(c)(3) is responsible for housing of whatever animals it wants, but the ACO contract still stays separate where we're paying Mary to serve as Animal Control Officer, only pick up dogs and cats that you get phone calls from the LEC on, that, you know, the ACO portion's not the bring your dog, we're, we'll take your dog in or your eat cats because they're not spayed and neutered, that's on the 501(c)(3). That removes the personal liability from Mary, removes the liability from the county and the city on the contract from the ACO, because the 501(c)(3) is actually the renter.
Does that sound like John? That work?
Sounds good to me.
I think we had some learning curves here we need to get through.
Well, it's, it's that continuous gray area, you know, our interests, and I say ours, county and the city, is on the Animal Control side, Mary's is very much on, on the shelter as well, and since they're both in the same location, that's our problem. I think if the shelter is responsible for the location, our contract continues with Mary on picking up of the dogs and cats, but she's taking them to the shelter that's currently owned by the five, or rented by the 501(c)(3).
Can we draw papers to that effect somehow or other, Travis and John work together with Mary and see if we can get something worked out, it's gonna be good for everybody?
Good.
You're gonna have to get your 501(c)(3) board up and running, they're gonna have to carry insurance, they're gonna have to do something.
I mean, whatever you use, what are we, what are we gonna do with the dog?
That's a major liability right there.
I, I have, Travis.
No, I mean, that's...
I have a rescue, a rescue that will take him, I can do a transfer to transfer and nobody is liable for him any longer, he needs to be returned.
Oh, so that would mean the dog would not go through Courtney?
It would not go through Courtney, because that's an adoption, and that dog has a bite history, I, I will not sign off on him as an adoptable.
Out of two shelters, because he had a history at Almost Home as well.
But you know where, the person who wants to adopt the dog, they're bringing the dogs into the puppy, right? You understand that?
The...
She, her position is not one that she can take the dog today, or she can have...
And she's not taking the dog, she, she, see, that was, that was the issue, she, she's not planning on ever taking this dog back, they were transferred, and I told you that because that's what I was told, that they are taking this dog to a rehabber in Des Moines. Now, I have to go to a rehabber because it has issues, you don't send a dog to rehab if it doesn't have any issues. They're sending it to a rehabber that's not certified or licensed to rehab dogs, was another one of my issues, and she's accepting that dog into her rescue. So Courtney's not keeping that dog, and our contract says that also, you cannot transfer this dog, for the adopter, if it doesn't work out, because you are liable when you adopt them out, if it doesn't work out, it has to be returned, and then you just do the whole vicious cycle again. When you transfer it from shelter to shelter, you're no longer responsible, I've done it many times, I've, Earth Angels out of Illinois, they, they've taken probably three of our community dogs, a Great Pyrenees, American Aschamo, ones that, if, I try to get them out the door in a week, because I get fourteen calls a week to take in dogs from the county or the city or whatever, I get fourteen calls for our area a week. We have six stalls out there, I can't possibly keep them all, I'm sitting with twenty-two cats and a pit bull out there right now. So, you know, we just had a big adoption day with Bomb Guards and they let us in and we adopted, trying to do, I'm working with as many people as I can, can, and I'm trying to do it the right way, and that's where I got frustrated, because you don't do it like that, you just don't, because then, my name was on that too. I was gonna transfer it to another rescue out of state and be done with it.
Well, I, I think, therein lies again another reason why we have the problem, is Humboldt County owns this dog, Humboldt County does not want to be in the business of owning dogs. And, at the end of the day, regardless of what happened with this dog, because you're going to make sure it doesn't go to Courtney, and we are going to get sued and you are going to get sued, so that, that's what's frustrating for you.
Okay, is there any way to get this dog, let Courtney have this dog without it coming back on you?
I can transfer it back to Almost Home if they'll take it, and they can adopt to whoever they want to.
Then let's get with Almost Home and try to get that done, because it was their dog in the first place.
It was their dog in the first place, and I called them to take their dog back and the director said, "Does it have aggression?" I said, "Yes," and he said, "You can have it." He wouldn't take it back, so...
But in reality, it was them that gave the dog out, no one had had aggression in the first place. I think it's their responsibility to take the dog back, and then they can do whatever, and then you're, everybody's off, everybody's off the hook.
Yeah.
And that's what should be done. It, can we get that done?
Apparently I have nothing to say about this, so, whether Mary does it or not, I mean, that's, that's what we've learned through all this, is that regardless of what anyone says...
And then if Courtney, if Courtney wants the dog, let her be at the front door of Almost Homes and take the dog as Mary walks in and signs it off. That way, we're all out of the mess.
I don't think that's gonna get us out of the mess.
Really?
No, I don't, I, I think, I think, this has been going on for a month.
Well, what if this...
This is week four.
What happens to Courtney when the dog does bite something or kills an animal?
It happens to Courtney.
Yeah.
Is there, is there something that can be drawn up that everybody can sign that says we're, we're releasing responsibility to Courtney and she is solely responsible, her and her alone, period, paragraph, end of story?
Well, I don't even think we get there, because Mary's not gonna do it, so...
Well, we're not saying she ain't gonna do it, we're, can we get the transfer?
I can't, I would transfer the dog.
We don't even have to have the dog.
I'll just transfer it.
Transfer it to Almost Home, give the paperwork to Courtney.
It was Almost Home's dog, it should be, Fort Dodge's problem, not mine.
But now it's ours, it's our problem, I mean, that's the problem, it's our problem, it's not someone else's problem, it's ours.
So let's start out with explaining how it's a problem.
Well, then I'll just take the dog back. They, I can talk to, I know the board members on Almost Home, and I also know the director, and I can talk to them and see if they'll take the dog back. If they won't, I'll take the dog back and I will transfer it to the shelter in Oklahoma.
That, they're, they're in that, that's the problem.
What's the liability difference between transferring it to another shelter and...
When, when you transfer the dog, they're then taking responsibility for it.
So what's the difference between that and asking somebody to adopt it?
If you adopt it, you're saying, basically, if you adopt it, I mean, if you adopt an animal out, you're saying, "I'm adopting it because this is a great little puppy" and blah, blah, blah. I won't do that because if not, he has a bite history.
But I'm saying, where's the liability?
If it bites somebody, I can be sued, it's the liability.
But I heard you put that on the adoption, the dog's the adoptive, they're aware of it, so how can you be sued?
The lawyer I talked to said she just said in a case that they went back and sued the shelter where it came from, because you're not supposed to adopt out a dog that has aggression.
Did they hear that to us when we went and got, did they tell you it had a history?
No.
Why did they get all the hope by not having to, what was the dog's...
And then, and then like I said, I tried to give it back and they wouldn't take it back, I'm like, so...
So what keeps the other shelter, that we sent this dog off to another shelter, it bites somebody there, what keeps that shelter?
Because that shelter has to then say, "We're signing off on this dog."
So why can't the person do it, instead of adopting it out?
Because all of the contracts, all the adoption agreements, every adoption agreement I've ever seen from any rescue or shelter states, if the dog doesn't work out with you, it has to be returned to the shelter, so they don't get to adopt it out. The person that has it, they don't get that option, they have to, if they don't want it, they, that's why you do a transfer to transfer for a shelter, then you're out of it.
I, I got another question. Originally, the dog was Courtney's, right?
No, it was Rick Armour.
It was Rick, Courtney's.
It was her boyfriend.
Co-owner, because she lives with him. All right, if it was originally her dog, I don't know, maybe we could figure this out somehow, that it was originally her dog? All this paperwork, does it mean anything if it was originally her dog and it ended up in yours?
Because Almost Home adopted it to Rick Armour, not Lily.
Well, then, then does it go back, can we, can it, can it be that it goes, still goes back to Almost Home's property?
I would love it to go back to Almost Home, I tried that a couple months ago.
Seems like we're getting nowhere with this. We spoke after this discussion, we could go talk to Almost Homes and make progress with them, help them, have them on our side, see if they're, so our problem.
Yeah.
That's the only solution, it looks to me like.
I'm, I'm, I'm still don't understand how they have the ability to give it away to us and not disclose that the dog's dishes, when we can't give it away, we're not exposing.
And disclose.
Yeah, so to me, it goes back to them by the fact that they didn't disclose it. So here, your dog, take, we're...
I agree.
Yeah.
And then they put the chip in my name.
But I dread trust, right?
Oh, no.
They did.
You need to refute that, because that, that, the chip should have been in...
Rick Armour's name.
Yes.
We took it, we took it...
You reported it stolen, right?
No, we don't, we never reported it.
Never reported it.
No, he gave it up when confronted.
Okay.
This is like a vicious circle.
There was no way...
Tell me about it.
You can't let Mary around to keep speeding up.
Tell me about it.
Anybody coming to his house?
No way he was gonna report that dog stolen.
Mary, I suggest you go get ahold of Almost Home, see what you can work out and report back to us next week. Think that would work out? No?
He doesn't wanna deal with it for the next week because it's been...
I've dealt with it for a month.
That's why I gotta continue this vicious circle.
What, what can we, what, do you have any ideas what we can do for a solution?
I thought the easiest solution was to give it to Courtney, who has been with the dog since it was adopted, and who probably has just as much right to the dog as Rick ever did, and now more.
Can Almost Home give that to Courtney?
Yes, they can.
So why can't we just take the paperwork to Almost Home and have them sign it off to Courtney?
And they'll do it, because...
Because that's a theoretical, and it won't do it.
Don't think so.
Bruce, isn't, isn't there an ordinance or a law that after a dog has been, has bitten twice, isn't it labeled a vicious animal, it should be put down?
Yeah.
What happened to that? Why don't we just put this damn thing down, be done with it?
Have it pulled. Have we seen an article not being printed?
See, that's the biggest...
Now, if we die by the city of Humboldt...
The board of county.
Or the county of Humboldt.
But it is Humboldt.
The city council.
Yeah. That's one of the animal people, I, I don't know that...
It is the ordinance, and the dog does have a bite history and it has been reported.
I thought once you, you know, once you...
The dog bit Jenny Thomas in the face, she's one of, she's my dog walker, she, off the property, off, off the shelter, she took it to Sheldon Park, it bit her in the face. She sent me the pictures, she got the rabies certificate, I reported it to Dean, so it, he does have a bite history, it's been reported and documented.
So it's labeled a vicious animal and they either have to put it down, I mean, that's a, I thought that was state law, actually, it's not, it's not just, because if it were that simple, then there'd be a lot of dogs put down.
Yeah.
So they, they get hearings on it.
Right.
So, if the dog's in Dakota City, I believe Dakota City's already made sense to address this, but there would be a hearing in front of the city council where you would discuss what happened and whether the dog is or is not vicious, whether it needs to be put down, and what conditions need to be put on the dog, and the dog's own owners. But would that avenue be as easy to pursue as trying to give back to a shelter?
Dakota City, I think Dakota City's already dealing with it.
So it's not a board of supervisors problem?
Dakota City did not deal with it, we went to the city council meeting, I presented my police report, I presented the pictures of the lady being bitten in the face, I presented all of the documentation showing the dog's bite history, and they, what they said was, "We've had vicious dogs before, we just, they'll need a, a higher fence or a heavier chain." Mary?
How can we get, this is all I'm going to ask, and take all the emotions and everything. How can we get this dog back to Courtney without it coming back to bite anybody else in the bud? Any paperwork that you have or know of, can we sign off this dog somehow, some way, so nobody's liable for this dog? Because we all know what it is.
If she works with any rescue or, it doesn't even have to be a shelter. Rescues are different than a shelter or a pound. They're licensed as a private person. They run them out of their houses, but they're still licensed. If she works with any rescue group, I can transfer it to the rescue group and they can adopt it to her. It, so it doesn't have to go back to a pound or a shelter or a holding facility. Rescues are licensed privately.
Do rescue groups have to take their dog? Will they have to, do they have to accept the transfer?
They don't, I mean, they don't have to.
Because they knew they'd get rid of it, they probably would.
But most rescues, like the rescue that they're working with, they pull fighting dogs, fighting pit bulls from Chicago and Texas, and bring them back to Iowa and filter them through all their little people that hold them. That's the rescue they're working with. If they want to take responsibility, let them. I don't agree with that.
I have no doubt Courtney would sign off on anything. It's all Humboldt County liability.
So will it work in the court if the dog does bite somewhere down the line? Will it work? Will it hold up?
Require her to defend us. So I, I guess I'm not concerned about a potential lawsuit. I'm not nearly as concerned as Mary is. Our, our first argument would be probably to say Humboldt County had no interest in the dog to begin with and should not be involved in any way.
I think there's a lot of good cases here as far as the dog was brought under false pretenses, huh? So let's find a way to get the paperwork and get...
Yes, we're, we're not dealing with a woman of means. So she, if you want to send the dog to Oklahoma, she's not going to be able to go to Oklahoma to get it. If you want to send the dog to Illinois, she's not going to be able to go to Illinois to get it. She...
If she takes all responsibility and it relinks us...
I have no doubt she'll take all, she'll sign whatever to get this dog.
Then, then I think we should go ahead and do this and learn from it, make sure it never happens again, and let it go. Because I think you could fight in court, Mary, that that dog was brought to you under false pretenses. And it should have been for Dodge, and it could go back to bite them, not us. Because it was their responsibility in the first place. And they kind of fluffed it on to you. So I think what we should do is find a way that we get something in our paperwork that she will take full responsibility to saw and let it go.
She will.
And, and, and walk away from it and, and make sure that this doesn't, and, and make sure that if a dog has an issue and does bite, you put that right there on the chart and everybody to see it. And everybody knows.
What does the state inspector say on situations like this?
I can't imagine what law he... Can't hate.
They don't.
Has he ever said anything about that? They...
They just, they, they just go through the facilities.
Yeah, they just... Well, they like to make sure all the paperwork is there. Yeah, the paperwork is... Go through all the channels and all that. One of the paperwork's in order.
We're going to give the dog back to Courtney.
Well, we have to get...
We have to get her signed...
I'm going to try to transfer the dog back to Almost Home and they can give, first, and they can give the dog to Courtney. And then I did what I was supposed to do, if they'll take the dog back.
That would be...
I'll trans, it's a transfer to transfer. I'm, I'm off of it. So if, if I can transfer it back to them, they can do whatever they want.
The chip's in your name, too.
And it's beyond my name.
Seems like the point of vicious circles brought up, this, we're still in that. We are the board of supervisors. We represent Humboldt County. There's our county attorney. We went through this howl, you know, a week ago that was just brought to our attention. I would say we act under the advice of our county attorney to move forward as the county side. Nice to hear all this, but... That's to give the dog back to Courtney is what the county attorney said. I think that's just what we decided to try to do. So that's, nothing's changed. That's where we are, that's who we represent.
I would think Almost Home would have to take it back.
That's all, all fine and good, but John spent a lot of his time on this. He's, I respect his advice on this matter, and I think we take that and we move forward. We're just airing out the same thing that brought everybody.
Do not do now.
Yeah.
Well, and technically, if I would look at it on, on my part, Mary, and Courtney never gave up the dog originally.
No, she, she was looking for the dog.
Okay. And it was co-ownership, so basically the dog ended up with you in a housing situation, and she come got it. And it was her dog in the first place. So there, there's a lot, I mean, you're not going to be liable for that dog in, in, in a court if, if something happens. And I know that's what you're worried about. And, and this helps everybody get this off the agenda, and it's taken care of today.
Can we get a report back to how the progress of, you know, I mean, the way we're, our meeting's going, we still may be here, have to be here.
You might.
So if you go call, at least touch base with somebody, let us know how we're proceeding.
Step one would be to go to Almost Home. Step two would be go to the other agency.
Right.
One of those two should work out for us, I think.
But I'm guessing we're still going to be here for a while.
What do you do in a case when you pick up a dog and the owner comes forward?
Um, I do, just like I always do. I, we scan them for a chip. We call, I, I usually call both vets in town if I pick it up locally to see if they know whose dog it is. If they have a tag, that makes it really easy. Nine out of 10 of them don't have tags on. If I don't find the owner, I put them online saying, "Does anybody recognize this dog?" And usually, somebody knows somebody that owns it or whatever, and they get ahold of me, and it's taken care of. We have a seven-day hold if it...
How is it taken care of? I mean, do you just...
The owners come and get it.
They come and get it?
The owners come and get it. After seven days...
Courtney come and got this dog from you, you give it to...
After two months, after seven days.
Just a minute. Now Courtney come and got this dog from you, and you give it to Courtney. It's her dog. Why are we even talking about this?
Because she wasn't the owner. The owner, the tag was in Rick Armour's name.
Her boyfriend was the owner and they lived together.
I just was working with a DCI agent on a case where the dog, they had to go through the jail and get a statement from the owner to release the dog for a family member to come pick up the dog. Now that came from our DCI special agent with a dog I had, that the owner had to sign something saying that somebody else could get the dog. I don't make up these rules. These aren't my rules. I'm just trying to do the paperwork and carry on.
But I'm getting at... Why would you think a girlfriend or a boyfriend would have a legal right to somebody else's property? If they're not, I mean, if they even have to be married or...
The state of Iowa plays that under joint ownership. You know, if I own a car in my name, but my wife, my wife's co-owner.
Yeah, right. But if you had a girlfriend, she wouldn't necessarily own half your car.
They can claim, they can claim whatever marital status they want with the state of Iowa.
They've had kids together. I mean, they've lived together, so, you know...
You don't have to be like the owner, picked up the dog, so why are we arguing about it?
I would like...
To call Almost Home.
Call Almost Home and then see, go with Chris's recommendation of, if Almost Home refuses, that's my opinion, but I'm not...
Yeah, if Almost Home refuses the transfer, then get that dog back to Courtney and have her sign whatever she has to sign. Knowing the fact that the dog was bit, we'll release it to you, knowing that you know the dog was bit.
My question to Almost Home would be, why did that dog get given to us when we...
Because they don't want to deal with dogs that have aggression.
I understand that, but the whole thing is, is we can't give it away without its notifying. Why did they have the ability to do that? Plain and simple.
Maybe they're liable.
Well, that's the fifty-dollar question.
They'll probably take it back.
All right, I'm just going to make a motion here on the agenda. It says, "Accept resignation, animal control." From my understanding, you don't want to resign. You know, you sent this text message to us saying you wanted to, and then you sent us an email saying you don't want to. So I'll make a motion that we are not going to accept your resignation, this resignation that was sent to us, and keep you instated at the, as the ACO.
I would second that motion, right?
So we have a motion in a second on the...
Not to accept the resignation.
Not to accept the resignation. Any other discussion?
Yes. Very simply, why'd you send something like that in a text in the first place?
I already, I already said that. We had a group discussion between Dave, Dean, the other parties involved, where it was just a constant thing on me of, "Do this, don't do that." I mean, it's just like what happened today, that vicious circle. That's what I've been dealing with for two months.
Well, but you sent that, and it says, "Let everyone know you're resigning."
I sent a text message because I was being pressured to, like I said, you guys don't even know all the paperwork and everything that's involved in running this town. He probably has an idea with the paperwork because he runs the facility. I was to a frustrated point of saying, you know, "Come on, you guys, help me out here." I was asking for help. "Help me out here or I'll just be done." That's what I said. "Help me out."
When you said you were resigning, why didn't you send a text and say, "I'm frustrated"?
Because...
It's not a good thing, this back and forth business, to end up with the resignation possibly...
And Dean and I had private conversations after that of, you know, he's like, "We're going to work this out. We will take care of it. We will." I mean, have you ever been frustrated and said something you didn't mean?
I'm sure we all have, but I, I just don't care for the language here. You could have certainly stated your frustration, because you certainly are frustrated. We're frustrated, but this has been, this was a...
Come to the board and talk to us.
I would ask in this discussion that you...
The text message to anybody but Dean, Herter, and Dave.
Yeah, Dave just...
Well, I understand, but Dave is, and we're not all picky, but Dave gets the text, so he reports back to us that we might be looking for an animal control, or we might be looking for whatever. We all on this team, so that's the, "Come and talk to us."
I think there's been mistakes made here, and I think we've learned from it. I go, I'm moving, go ahead, I mean, I suggest we go ahead and vote on the board's decision.
Well, and I liked the, the discussion part, "Come and talk to us more often." You are still...
Seven to eleven every month. The, we've got other boards and stuff going. We've always got a report every month of what boards we've gone and what they talked about. Conservation Board sends us their minutes every month, so...
You don't feel like you're out there, need to get your board together and...
When you're meeting once a month, I let everybody know what's going on.
Bingo.
How many cats you pick up, how many dogs you pick up in all this.
What's going on?
Maybe, maybe a little more communication.
Yep. Lot more communication.
Not weekly, maybe quarterly.
Monthly, monthly. All in favor? Pose the same sign. Motion carried. So please, if you do have luck with them, we'll probably still be here for another hour, I'm guessing. Thank you.
May I say something?
Sure.
I'm moving back to Humboldt. I'll be living on my property. I'll be able to help Mary more.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Taking care of the animal and that. I'm more than willing to help.
Great.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
If I'm quiet, maybe somebody can write about me in the paper. I'm not stupid.
Can't write that down right now.
Travis, you were discordant.
Thank you.
Are you all good or you want...
We have a real short recess.
Yeah.
It would have been long haul.
Do you really want...
I was like coming in, too. I was like, what?
Do you really want to do this?
Yes, I do.